Relates to the hospital and the nursing home. And I see that everybody's here. I appreciate you all for coming. Thanks, thanks a lot. So, you know, at the last meeting, we came up with a number of questions, the board did, and that's why we've asked you to come and hopefully can explain, I guess, maybe a little bit of what's going on and where we stand and what has happened and let everybody ask what they need to be like they ask.
Tom, you want me to sit and stand?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on TV, so we need to...
Okay, well, first, thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk with you about the subject. If I can, go to question four first. Martin had sent me an email-
Okay.
-that really kind of outlines what the public purpose and I know we've got some new members to the council, so I'd really just like to take you through how we got to where we are.
Well, you need to give me your name-
Oh, I'm sorry.
...about who you are.
Tom Keim, CEO of St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital.
So- I don't know that we've got-
They don't have a copy of my name?
We don't have a copy of the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm sure it was things that were obviously asked at the last meeting, so if you just-
Well, one of the questions was, "The TIF funds are to be used to serve public purpose. Please define the public purpose." So, I think that's kind of defines, I think, why we came after the TIF and worked with the city to make the nursing home a reality, you know, now a reality. Back in, I guess it was 2008, the hospital made a decision to, after we'd been approached by some companies, whether we'd be willing to sell the nursing home. We never ever thought about selling the nursing home. It had been a county nursing home for years. It was given to the hospital to run at that point or take ownership of. And as we were, you know, looking at the infrastructure of the building itself, it was a forty-year-old building that has really an infrastructure that needed replaced. And in our opinion, it really needed, the community needed a new nursing home. And we had been approached by several groups wanting to purchase the home, and we decided that in the best interest of the county and the city, that we would seek a partner that would be willing to purchase or build a new nursing home. We could have taken a windfall, we could have walked away from it, but we felt that there was greater good in what the hospital could do to facilitate a new facility. We just didn't want to sell it and have somebody come in and operate a nursing home on, up at Riverview. So, we found a partner, and what the hospital basically did is we took less money for the sale of the nursing home with the intent that we could use that to get somebody that would come in and build a new facility. And if you think about it, the win-win is that the Riverview stayed, the property remained owned by the hospital. We own the Riverview property right now. We sold the license for the beds with an agreement to provide them land and to provide the beds. So, the property, once the new nursing home would be built, would be returned to the county. The county would take it in and create offices, storage, whatever it chooses to do with it because it's on county fair property. So, we wanted to retain that asset for the county. My understanding is the county is looking at taking down some old buildings in the city to create parking. The community gets a brand-new nursing home, and we know we're in an older community, and with the baby-booming population that's out there, there is a need to ensure that we have a nursing facility, a skilled nursing facility in St. Gene. So, then it comes on the tax rolls. So, if you look at it, the public benefit is that it was a win-win for everybody. The hospital has been very patient, obviously, with Shafik to get to the end game, which is to bring a new nursing home to the community, to ensure that there's good quality healthcare in St. Genevieve. It's a win for the county because they retain ownership of the building. It's a win for the city for more parking, and it's a win for everybody that pays, and they will pay taxes that go back into this community. The fact that it's going to take Shafik, and I think his budget number is eight million dollars, to build a new facility in St. Gene, I think the public good is that we're getting investment in our community, we're getting a new nursing home, we're getting someplace for our people that are growing older, that they have a place that is, will be able to adapt to their needs, and they're not in an old facility that is crumbling underneath it. So, that's the public good. There are some other questions. I don't know how you want to take them, or if you want to ask me questions.
Do you have a copy of the questions? I'd like to have a copy.
Yeah, I didn't anticipate, realize he was going to enumerate them. I was trying to tell him the topics that were discussed at the meeting, so I can go print off the email and-
I appreciate it. I'd like to have one.
Okay.
I think one of the things, Tom, is the structure of the contract and not meeting those deadlines and some explanation as to what happened there. And here's the situation. We have these TIF funds that we have committed to that project, but our contract, the contracts expired. So, now, this board has to look at this money, this TIF funding, that we have to spend by December of this year. So, the contract's expired. We need to try to understand that, and we need to make a decision whether to renew that agreement, or we have to act very quickly if we're going to spend that money somewhere else. If we were going to spend that money on streets and roads, we'd have the engineering down there, plans drawn. I mean, there's a process there. So, this has a sense of urgency for this board to determine, we have an obligation to get the most we can for the public with these remaining TIF funds. So, we just need to make, we need to figure out what happened, what's happening now, what kind of completion dates are expected, what the current status of the project is. My biggest concern is if we renewed this agreement, I mean, where's the project standing? Is the project going to get completed? We can't throw this money away on a project that doesn't get completed. So, understand, I understand completely that big projects oftentimes run into roadblocks, and completion dates get pushed and pushed. I totally understand that. But we just need some confidence that the project will find a completion date.
Do you want me to wait until Martin gets back?
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, and I think, first off, we know that there was incentives, or no, I shouldn't say incentives is the right word, but there was deadlines that needed to be met. And I will tell you that Shafik and Jay can certainly address the current project and where it stands, and I know that there was a timetable discussed, you know, with the city manager and I guess the planning with the construction superintendent or the contractor. But I can tell you what we know and the way the hospital, you know, kind of was made aware of what was happening with this. When the sale of the nursing home took place, Shafik was told at the time when the transfer of ownership went from the hospital beds to Shafik, that there would not be a need to go through an entire CON hearing, that that board had said that they understood that it was just a transfer of the beds. As Shafik got to the point where the plans were drawn and ready to go forward, the CON boards had changed, and they had said that you need to come back before this board and go through the entire process. So, Gary Nelson, myself, Jay, and I don't know who else attended, but we went with Shafik, testified before the state on what this new nursing home would be, and we did get approval for the, obviously, for the CON. The question was, in their minds, that the hospital owned the property, the beds had transferred, they wanted to make sure the hospital was not going to, when they got the building back, put those beds back into service. So, we just had to assure them there was that.
I personally, we count on the city attorney, Mr. Elbers, to go as a guidance on contracts. And it certainly seems like this contract has completely expired. I personally feel the moral obligation to the community to provide and make sure that we have beds as our community grows older and a quality facility that's not crumbling. I've been at Riverview recently, and it's, you know, showing its age. So, I want to make, I want to understand, was our, is our commitment to the hospital, is it to the nursing home folks? What was our previous commitment? What does it need to be now? And then, we just have to decide pretty quickly what we're going to do.
Well, back when the deal was originally structured, we met with the superintendent of schools, with the city manager, the mayor, Chauncey, Mike Stewart, to ensure that there was acceptance that the TIF monies, you know, this was a viable project because we wanted to be able to provide land for the nursing home to be built, to make, really, to make this deal happen. So, with that, we entered into an agreement for the TIF, for the development. We assigned it to Shafik for that. Our agreement with Shafik, we are protected. We have, if this council does not decide that the TIF monies, Shafik is the one that would be, I mean, the hospital would be, would be made good. I think that it would be wrong to do that, and that's why I'm here. We put in place for our contracts everything possible to protect the hospital and the use of the funds. So, this agreement is with Shafik. And I think that the spirit of the agreement was that, yeah, it took some time, and he can tell you some of the delays that he ran into with the CON, he can tell you about the delays he ran into with the economy. We asked him to try to do business locally, so he went to a local bank, which did approve the loan, but they wanted it through an SBA. And that delayed the whole process nine, nine months, a year, because he was trying to keep that money locally, and he did it because I asked him to try to keep money local. He went with local contractor to do this, and he had worked in other places with other nursing homes and had people that he used, but he did that because he was showing good faith in trying to get all those dollars here because he knew he was getting something from this community. And, you know, I don't know any other businesses that are coming to this community and willing, or people that's willing to spend eight million dollars. Now, the hospital's very patient because we could have put in penalties, and we could have put the hammer down too. But in our effort to be for the common good and knowing that this deal was made possible because we secured the land for him, which he's used as part of his financing package, this, the right thing to do is to continue to pay the TIF, and that's really the reason I'm here. The hospital works, obviously, with the nursing home as part of the healthcare providers in this community, and we did not want to do anything that would have made this deal go south because he ran into delays with financing, he ran into delays with CON, and, you know, it, whether it's, it took an extra year or two, the project is still a great project for this community. And I would think if this council had a company or a business come here willing to invest eight million dollars, you would see that as a good thing to help get behind and take credit that you were part of making it happen because it really was you that allowed us to get that land that we could provide him. And that's what we're all about, making this community a better place.
Yes, it'd taken an extra two years. As far as rent on the existing nursing home, were you guys, were you guys get, is the hospital getting rent for the nursing home?
Yeah, we got rent for the, but we rebated almost, I'm going to say, at least seventy-five percent of the rent. Again, we did that in our deal so that he could use those funds to build up his ability to make this, you know, get the financing and to put the money in to the project. You know, all along the way, you know, we had, we were getting updates, you know, I'd see Martin at Rotary Club or see him in the community. We asked, you know, what was going on, and kind of gave updates that we're waiting on Shafik to get plans or waiting to, he's waiting to submit them here. And, you know, I guess never along the way did we feel that the TIF money was in jeopardy. We thought that there was just an ongoing understanding that the project is moving, it's moving slower than everybody wanted it to move. And I think Shafik will tell you that I did say, where are we at? We need, you know, you need to show something, you know, you need to be able to tell people, this is when we're going to start construction, this is when we're going to get things done, this is, this is when we hope to be in it. And knowing that he was trying to do these things and knowing that he has a personal guarantee on the notes with the hospital, I mean, here's somebody that's, has a corporation, and we didn't accept the corporation guarantee. We had him and his family sign a personal guarantee. So, I know that this man, when he, you know, told me he was going to get something done, he was going to get it done, and it just took longer. And I'd hate to see him, I'd hate to see him get crucified because of, it took him longer to do that. And, you know, so I guess in a way, I'm making an emotional appeal, but, you know, I'm saying as somebody that works very hard to keep business in this community and somebody that, you know, stepped up to be chamber president, that's what we do, is we do things that want companies to come here and to build and invest in our community and keep those dollars local. And he's done everything that we asked him to do. We're, the hospital's not out any money, but he's going to be out money. And like I said, I don't think anybody from the city has ever gone and talked to somebody that wants to invest eighty, eight million in our community and ask him, why are you running behind?
What did you miss in the street?
It is, and I thought that the offline conversations were at least providing just updates as I knew them at the time. Until I could give something concrete, we were just passing along the same information. Our board did the same thing. I mean, we had board meetings. We discuss, you know, what do we do here? Because we have an agreement, and we have a legal document, and he missed the deadline. But our choice was, yeah, he missed the deadline. Do we want to put him in default? Do we not want this to go through? And we chose to say, we'll hold off because he's making progress, it's slow, but it's going to get done. If you go out on progress parkway, it's underway.
That's fine, Tom, and I understand all that. But as a board here, he missed two deadlines. We hadn't heard anything for two years, okay, that he missed two deadlines. So, what we, Tom had talked about a while ago, you know, we may be thinking about doing something else with this money because it's been so slow coming around.
When we met with Martin and Shafik and Donzie Construction, I don't know if Jay was there, we tried to get a definition of substantial completion. In other words, what would satisfy the city at the time before the TIF funds would expire? And so, that's the deadline that Donzie Construction, Shafik, and everybody said that these are the dates that we can meet so that if it met that definition of what substantial completion is, then it would, it would be in time that those TIF monies could be used and that the project would have satisfied substantial completion.
But someone still at the same time for the last two years should have been coming back and saying, we want an extension on this. We're not done to your parameters of completion, so we need an extension on this. And no one did.
And if we're guilty of that, we are guilty of that. If, but I guess I would tell you that in our, in our minds, that if there was something that we were going to be, that the city had said, look, you're past this, we're not going to give, we're not going to meet the money, we, we felt that there was more or less that everybody was on the same page, that we were doing and providing updates as we got them and could be that we would get in before the final TIF monies would be expended.
I would hate to see this whole thing go south because of what appears to me is kind of a communication issue. I think that's a really minor thing in the grand scope of what this project is. So, my question is, what can we do legally to maybe, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but to make this go forward and make this deal still happen? Because, I mean, I feel it's for the betterment of the community, and that's what this is all about.
I agree completely with Beth. I understand that the contract was, the items in the contract were, didn't complete on time. And I think it's a really bad deal that we didn't have more direct communication from somebody to tell us we need extensions. But because the contract is no good, to me, means nothing. The project's still going. I do think we have a moral obligation to the community to make sure this happens. And I would hate to be a member of this board years from now, and they look back and say, well, that's why the nursing home didn't come here, and we don't have people, beds for people. I understand completely that projects of any scope can get delayed repeatedly. We have this little project called, with the Corps of Engineers, Eleven. That's been, that's been delayed for twenty years. These projects of any scope can get delayed and delayed and delayed. I think, as Beth said, I think it was a bad communication effort, but just because the contract has expired, I agree.
I mean, why does that mean we can't renegotiate another contract?
Exactly. Well, we talked with our attorneys, and of course, have had some discussion with Martin on that line as well. And, you know, our understanding, without getting a legal opinion, but from our attorneys who's talked with the city's TIF attorney, that they felt that it could be amended. And that, that was the language that we presented to Martin earlier in the year, was an amendment to the TIF that would define substantial completion and would give a new date.
So, what would happen if you would end up getting a hundred thousand? Would that stop the deal, the building, construction?
I would tell you right, and I'm not going to, I can't speak for Shafik, but I know, you know, he has more to lose than that, obviously, with the agreement that he has with us to build a new nursing home. So, you know, to be, it's not going to, it's not going to not make the deal happen now because he's already underway, he's already been committed, he's already used the land as collateral. He will have to pay that money back to us. And only part of the TIF funds were used for the purchase of the land, as some of the dollars of the three thirty-seven five went to cover costs of the city's cost, I believe, of the TIF attorney and some of the survey work. And there's roughly about seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars that the hospital fronted for all those expenses that was included in the TIF money as well. So, of the three thirty-seven five, seventy-two five goes to expenses that were used on behalf of the city and the survey and everything else to get the property ready. Two sixty-five was used in the purchase of the land.
Tom, I guess going back to what I was getting at before, as far as dollars at the hospital, true dollars at the hospital themselves are putting into this, you're really not, you're more or less guaranteeing it, you're not really putting dollars yourself into it, other than the agreement kind of flowing through, the TIF money flowing, flowing through you to him?
Well, we paid, the hospital paid three hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Right.
Seventy-two five went to pay the expenses of the TIF, two sixty-five went to purchase the land. So, the hospital bought that. Under the agreement, which with Shafik, what was to get the land, was to secure land through TIF. So, that TIF money would then just repay the hospital for what we had expended-
Right.
...because he would be getting property.
Okay.
The deal, the TIF with the city, with our deal between, for the, for the new nursing home, were tied together. We tried to get all those timeframes together.
Right.
And so, in hindsight, we probably should have went longer than three years, but we were trying to get a sense of urgency as well for this community. And we probably should have extended it, you know, had a different date, but we tied the two exactly together. So, the TIF agreement mirrors the hospital agreement as far as when the deadlines were to have the facility completed.
Right. Now, you mentioned what I asked about the income as far as, I guess where I'm coming from, asking since this thing went longer than the three years was. And there was obviously some, some payments, rent payments, lease payments, whatever, that was made to the hospital for the existing nursing home. So, I guess where I'm coming from, if the hospital made some income in the, in the timeframe in them other two years, that you realized some income off of that, I think that probably ought to come off, that ought to be on you guys and come off of this deal and maybe come off the TIF money. I don't know if we're talking ten dollars, if we're talking ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars. What I'm saying, if you guys made money off of this because he stayed longer in the old nursing home and the hospital made money off of it, I think that, that part ought to come off the TIF part. Because, obviously, you guys weren't, I would hope you're not, if we're all in this together to see a new nursing home built, why should the city take, you know, if you were, again, were making money off of the deal, so to say, then I think that ought to be thrown into the part and maybe taken off of the TIF.
Well, we did get rent, and our, when he missed the deadline, we could have escalated the rent, which we did not. And, you know, as far as buildings go, you know, that, the nursing home was rented, I want to say, for about nineteen hundred a month. So, again, that was structured to help him generate the cash to finance, to help finance, instead of him paying an absorbent amount for rent.
Sure.
We did not get a windfall. And I would, I would go back to, in the beginning, we could have sold the nursing home probably for a lot more than what we did, but under this agreement, we took less in the very beginning. So, I mean, we put a lot of skin in the game, as well as the city with the TIF, just to make this happen. So, you know, now, we're being penalized, and we have not been able to turn it over to the city. We've borne the expense of the upkeep. We have to pay maintenance on the building, which we have. So, it's not like the rent was just money in our pocket. Our agreement did require us to pay for repairs to the building as they came up. And we did have-
I mean, that part, is a part, I guess, I'd like to hear is, but if there was, I guess going back to it, if there's, if there was money realized, extra revenue realized in the last two years because of the delays that the hospital got, I think that ought to come back into the deal. But if you truly have spent that money maintaining the facility that you got, you know, that's, that's different. But I don't think that you guys ought to be making money at the expense of, you know, the TIF, so to say, that you could throw some more money into the pot because of the revenue that you made off of rent from the existing building.
But I guess I would argue that the TIF, the city really isn't out any money.
No, but obviously, we've got a hundred other projects that we could spend the money on, and that's what all these people sitting here-
We're already committed to this project.
I know, and I agree. But I'm saying, because of the delays, if there was revenues that came in, if somebody made money-
So, if you're getting two thousand dollars a month for twenty-four months of delay, that's forty-eight thousand dollars. How much of that went back into maintenance? So, if there's a three thousand or fifteen thousand dollar left in revenue, that would come off the three thirty-seven. But I don't understand why.
Well, well, the hospital just generated the money off of that rent because of the delay that they wouldn't have, I mean, that would then come to them that they weren't counting on.
This, the members of this board, when they made that commitment, made a commitment. I just don't see how this board can undo that commitment over simply a contract expiring. That's what we're talking about. If your friends are coming out and spending this money in other places, so be it. But there was a commitment made. I think we have an obligation to keep that commitment. I think it was terrible that there wasn't more communication as the agreements ran out. But I don't see, what's the idea? We just want to take the money, spend it somewhere else, and punish them because they didn't fulfill their contract on time? Or we just want to say, oh, we found some money, we're going to use it somewhere else? This commitment has already been made.
What does your banker do when you don't pay for years?
And that commitment-
They call the club.
Based off the contract.
Yeah, it takes two to tango. So I mean, if they didn't, and I'm not implying you take it from them, but I'm just saying, if they let their-
We need a new contract.
-down, it, to me, it's a message, it's a message that we didn't need it.
Snooze, you lose.
Yeah.
What kind of, what does that mean, you snooze, you lose? Chris, you want, you want to harm this project?
We're not harming it. They missed the contract. So they need to present a new proposal to us.
Well-
Is that correct? I mean, we can't honor something that's already expired.
I think it has to do with the word commitment and what kind of a commitment it is. It's not a legal commitment. The contract clearly has expired. The spirit of cooperation and moral wanting to feel like that the city is still a part of the new nursing home project, it has its, it has its own merits on a renegotiation. It's kind of like refinancing your house when it's in default. The bank doesn't have to refinance your house, but if it wants to have a relationship with you, it will listen to what you have to propose. But the TIF, the TIF note is basically like every other project you can look at for the remainder of this year. It doesn't have any special status when it has to have a public purpose. So every other project that you would look at for the possible use of this money, better have a public purpose. And that's what you guys make the big bucks for, is to try to decide which of these public purpose projects deserve the remainder of your TIF money. And I suggest to you that you weigh those projects against the moral feelings that you have on this one, because this is not a legal obligation. It's not committed funds. It was committed for the period of time set out in the contract. Cities can only, can only act with a written agreement. And so within the confines of the written agreement, it's clearly expired. Do you want another one? You want to refi this thing? Consider it. I mean, I encourage you to consider it. But I think you should consider it in the context of all your other pressing needs with the small amount of time left in the TIF calendar. And there's all kinds of options. There's options of putting this one to the back. There's options of saying, if we still have the money at the end of the project, we can renegotiate then, rather than just let the money go back to the taxing entities. You know, you got a responsibility to the taxing entities, too. They've given up their funds, allowing you to invest it for public purpose projects. And that's, that's what a TIF, a TIF is about.
I think this breaks down to be something very simple. And I know that the contract is void. So the question is really simple. And we can make a really simple and quick decision on restructuring and renegotiating a new contract at, in my thoughts, at the exact same amount. Because nothing really changed, except they got pushed back, which meant they had to spend more money than they ever had intended to, because nothing is cheaper today than it was two years ago. Or do we choose to say, "You know what? They broke their contract, snooze, you lose, throw them out, let's spend that money somewhere else." So I think we should make a decision.
Yeah, Tom, I hit the lottery. I got the six numbers here. Am I gonna wait till I'm 62 to cash it in? I got a year. If I go a year and-
What are you talking about?
And a month. The same thing you're talking about. You're talking about a contract.
If you think that because the contract is broken, we should not even-
I didn't say we have to consider giving them anything, but seems like, I feel like I got a gun to my head because we committed something that they screwed up. That's not my fault.
How did, how did the delay in their project affect our commitment to the project that is now being done?
Because they missed the deadline.
Expired.
Well, but I mean, is that your, is that your hangup?
Well, without a new agreement, I mean, they're, I'm not gonna-
We're gonna have to have a new agreement.
Right.
We know that. Legally, we have to have a written contract to spend money. But is all your thought process based on, "They broke the contract, we can take that money and do something else with it?"
Tom, I think my-
No, it's just that we're not obligated to give it to them. They need to present something to us.
I think we're still obligated.
Well-
Tom, I think-
Right now, how much are we discouraging new businesses from coming to town?
Exactly.
Well, no, I'm just saying we need a new agreement and we need it right away to get this done. But as far as the old contract goes, we have no obligation to it.
That's over, that's gone.
We got zero obligation to it.
And the, and the new agreement is basically, just like the old one, we have the parameters of what, of what, what we consider now is going to be the finished product. I mean, that's been worked out with the contractor and everybody, is what we figure substantial completion is. So you know what the new agreement has looked like, you know what the dollar amount is, it's just, do you want, do you want to do it or not? And I fully agree with you and I think you're morally, I think this board, especially the people that were on the board before, are obligated, just because you missed the deadline. And again, I guess you can certainly look at it any way you want to, but, but I think that's a pretty shallow way of looking at it.
I do, too.
But the only thing that I was getting at, Tom, was if the hospital made revenue off of this thing, generates some revenue, they ought to throw that into the deal.
I understand that.
If, if there was, again, I don't know what that dollar amount was.
Well, it just, the contract is void. Nobody, they did not keep their commitment. So we have the opportunity to say, "You know what? You missed it. As soon as you lose, you're out. We're gonna spend that money somewhere else." Or we honor the, our end of the agreement that people of this board made once and understand that, hey, delays occurred, we understand these things, this doesn't change our intent to support this project. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard at this table, all the reasons that St. Anthony doesn't get new businesses. And I think if we don't follow through with our initial commitment, there's gonna be a glaring reason why other businesses might not choose to move here. I can tell you from my personal experience and my business experience, you go out to do an eight or 10 million dollar project, there's gonna be delays. It's terrible that we didn't have better communication.
That's not our fault.
I know it's not our fault. But you're missing the point. There's gonna be delays.
The first delay was handled properly. They got an extension. That expired, too, and we still didn't never hear anything. They didn't ask for an extension.
They had a nine to 12-
And I'm not against giving them, but we need to get something going on.
We need to have a new agreement, but, I mean, I think Tom made a very compelling point, that they had a nine to 12 month delay trying to get the financing local. That's a big deal.
But we didn't know that prior to tonight. And now that we know that, that's-
But I mean, that's a big deal. I just-
What if we looked at it like-
I think we should vote on it right now and point out who, who will hold up their commitment.
What if, what if, what if they just showed up tonight and said, "We want to bring a new business to town. We're gonna spend $8 million building a building and we're gonna employ 40, 50 people." I don't know how many people are employed there. And we're gonna create-
I think we would jump at giving them $300,000.
We just did $300,000 a couple months ago.
I, I don't know. Look at it that way if you want to.
That's an excellent point.
The only other thing I would add, and certainly Shafiq can speak to this, too, but part of the reason for doing a new nursing home was the start of other development that could take place with this nursing home. You know, Shafiq and I have talked about dialysis center. He's expressed an interest to explore that. He's expressed an interest in potentially looking at other, whether it be assisted living or other things that, I mean, he has, he's getting invested in St. Anthony. And those are all the things that, you know, were in discussions that we've had along the way. And I would hate that there would be, you know, any kind of bad blood between the city and the hospital and the nursing home, because it's right for this community. And it was right five years ago, it's still right today. It's the right thing to do to, and let the city, you guys made it happen. If we, we needed the land and you gave us the TIF to do that, and that's what made the deal push through. And that's what happened five years ago and that's why, yeah, we're delayed and I appreciate, I know about delays as well. And it's, it's happening and it's gonna happen for this community.
So my, well, my question is on this email, and I guess Frank's the only one that can answer this. If so, how can a new arrangement be entered under the TIF? Is that still a possibility?
Well, it is a, if you, if you folks determine after weighing all your other options, that this is the way, the best way to spend the remainder portion of your TIF money, we can do it. You can do it now, or you could do it at the, towards the end of the TIF.
We have already decided that.
What's that?
We decided that once before. This, this table decided that once before, that that's how we want to spend this $337,000. Can we create-
But it was five years ago, Tom.
I understand.
And at that time, you had no other projects.
I understand.
And now you're at the very short end of your TIF.
Don't influence this. Our simple question is, can a new agreement be written to accommodate?
My answer was yes, today or in December.
Okay.
For all, a portion of the, of the amount that was on the table. You can do it today, you can put it at the front, you can put it at the back, you can shrink it, you can enlarge it.
Our commitments for the rest of the TIF money are made.
No, they're not.
Am I the only person, what do I not understand?
Well, you got 100, 125,000. You got about 120,000.
Not counting this.
Not counting this.
Right.
This is what you're discussing.
But the front or the back, there's no front or back. We already have a plan, less the 125, we haven't figured out yet how to spend.
I don't know that you've taken a formal vote on which of these projects you want to fund and what your options are. What's been presented is committed funds. There are certain funds that are committed. We've got to pay the community center. I presume we have a couple others that are absolutely-
We've had this meeting. We've discussed these things.
Well, you gotta vote, and you gotta vote on the record to make a decision.
Okay.
So you need to vote, I don't care how you vote, you can vote on, do we do this or don't do it? Do we, do we prioritize on the record and instruct administration on which ones you want done? But you don't just, I don't know, you can only act by ordinance.
Well, what, the direction tonight, that you give tonight will be to Frank and me. And if the direction is craft an agreement that commits us $337,500, then we'll do that.
It's gonna have to have five votes.
And we'll have it on your, well, it'll come on your next meeting agenda.
Or you can, or you can, you can, you can have more works sessions and, and look at other projects that have to get started right now, if you're gonna do them. It's lost opportunities, basically, what, what you're looking at. All I'm trying to do, folks, is tell you, you have choices. And I don't get a vote. I'm, and I, I don't, all I'm trying to say is that these aren't really committed funds in the way that I consider committed funds. You have to act by ordinance or contracts and it's gotta be within the confines of the written contract. Right now, we're not in that contract. We could be. You could, you could do a new one today, you could do a new one in December, for whatever amount you determine is the best use of these TIF funds.
I would propose that we draw up a contract that will meet the legal requirements to carry through, similar to the previous contract, just with renewed dates. And then it would come before this board under ordinance and there would be a vote. And if it's passed, it's over. If it's defeated, then we have to quickly move forward and figure out how to spend that money.
Well, we have to change not only the definition of substantial completion, which has been approached and looked at by Martin and our staff as a white box, instead of, you used to say, you have to have an occupancy permit. Roughly two years ago, you were supposed to have an occupancy permit. And then, then the, the extension of a year required notification from the note holder. You never got that notification.
I would propose that city staff and the other parties negotiate and agree to what would constitute the partially completed that fits the requirement under the regulations of the TIF.
I would like to discuss more TIF projects before we move into-
Well, you're gonna have a chance. If this gets defeated, you'll have your chance. If it doesn't get defeated, there's no sense in having more work sessions to talk about things that aren't gonna, that don't have any merit.
Yeah, if you like, if you like to do-
We need to decide.
But there is this other possibility, and that is that the white box definition isn't met in late December. If the white box definition isn't met, now you've got, poof, another expired agreement and no way to spend it on other projects. So the timing issue, the timing issue does, does come into play.
That, that would be my only fear moving forward.
If that were to happen, could we still make the payment to him in escrow until it's done, or we would still have to?
Well, you, you got the same problem with an expired agreement.
Gotcha. I mean, I think to the taxpayers, we also need to, or the taxing entities, we also need to take into consideration what the mayor was saying as well. I mean-
What do you mean?
As far as the two years, the delays and what the hospital might have profited off of it or-
I, yeah, I don't, Tom, and I don't even know if you know what that number is.
I don't, I don't think the hospital profited anything off of this. At $1,900 a month, how would it profit anything off of this?
Yeah, probably, right.
Yeah, that's a watch, that's nothing to even worry about.
I second Tom's motion.
Well, we're, we're-
Okay.
It doesn't really count, so.
Go on the record.
And if, if, and somehow we would have to figure out, between city staff and your party, how can you guarantee us we won't be caught at the end of, the middle of December and you haven't met your goal, the agreed upon completion status, and then we really don't get the opportunity to utilize this $300,000 and, for the taxpayers of St. Anthony, we just go back to taxing. We don't want to do that. We want to spend this money, I want to spend it with your project, but you're gonna have to somehow compel us that, with confidence that-
And I think that the timeline that Donzie met with the city and the city planner, they spelled out where the project would be at different points in that, on this timeline and when white box would be completed, and I want to say it was in October. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going off of memory, but there is a timeline that I think was presented to the city.
Yeah, and our concern was that it be prior to December 20th.
And he wanted it to be before December 20th. And I think the white box definition they-
Donzie came up with an October date, which would be better.
I guess you could look at this, though, looking at the whole other side of that, the big loser, obviously, in that is going to be him. If we even had to give the money back to the taxing entities, we're one of the taxing entities that gets the money back. We get part of the money, we get part of the money back. Sure, the school district gets the majority of it, but we would end up getting some of that back and, but, but certainly, he would be the big loser. We wouldn't, it would be money that was already committed to that project and, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the city, it would be really getting hurt, so to say. We would actually get a little bit of it back, but-
How many beds are at the, is this in Riverview Manor?
120.
That's great.
How many are proposed to be at the new building?
120.
And I think you operate less than that. I mean, they have a license for 120, but I don't, it's, I think you're operating around maybe the tops. I mean, that's, that's what I was wondering there.
That's protection, that's all you have. Any, any beds available?
Because they changed, made some private rooms and also did one wing offices.
120,000 times.
Downward.
And this facility had a lot of private rooms, too. Lot of private rooms for the, for the people and can use it here. It's, it's probably a wonderful facility and wonderful project for, for the community of St. Anthony. And you have to decide whatever you guys want, will do, I mean, we will accept whatever you guys say. But this project was done with, with a very honest, sincere, Tom and I had discussed so many times, that we are, we're gonna do whatever we need to do for this community. And we have, we stayed very honest with one another. We've used every contractor that we can use locally here. We have used all things that we could use locally, anything fully banked. And the bank could not do that at the end, but was strangled by Tom, you can do something, then I'm going to look for a different contractor. And then it happens, and within a month or two months. But first, we were trying to do everything possible that we could use local people, all local stuff. And that's what my commitment was with Tom, and Tom, that's what she wanted to do, that too, for me, too. And I think we have both, he knows me and I know him very well, and he has got a lot of respect for one another, because we are so sincere to the community, to St. Anthony. I mean, he's so sincere to, to want to have this project done. this project done, and done timely too. And he, he was being, talking to all the time. And, I mean, so we were very sincere to do it. I know it's got delayed, which is, I mean, three years, I don't know why we did four years and two. Now, I'm looking at the hindsight too, is, is, it doesn't seem like possible thing to do that because you have to do architecture plans. It takes what, six to eight months to get that one done. When that gets done, then you go look at financing because you need to have a number to how much it would cost you to build this one. Do then you go to financing, but then they take three, four months to decide whether they're going to give you money, not going to give you money too. Then you have to go to another six, four, three, four months for the bidding process. I mean, it's, it's, it's a long process. And, and, and I, I know that we, we were so excited to do in the deployed deals at that time, we didn't realize three months, years is going to pass like this. And, and, and at the same time, I mean, I know if you guys remember or not, 2009 and '10s was a economy, state, it was going down. No bank was talking to anybody at that time. The banks were going, going, going really bad. Lots of banks went bankrupt at that time too. No bank was talking to anybody at that time too. So getting any financing, talking about that one too was not even, even possible to do in that era too. But we were only, originally, we were very, very sincere for this, this project. And we were working very hard to, to work towards it too. And we made every effort that it, it gets on the way as soon as possible. And, and we did that. It actually meant that once we got the project ongoing, it took us two months to break the ground because the weather didn't cooperate with us. Because, because, because we were ready to go, but there was, the weather was raining every day. Everything snowing, everything was puddle of water. They couldn't dig it out, anything like this. So there's something that delays out there, which was beyond our control.
Well, I would move forward. Can we just, as Tom indicated, maybe have an agreement ready to go, and then the board doesn't feel, the majority of the board doesn't feel like it's something to do?
Well, I, I don't, I, I think maybe we need to have the further discussion as far as the overall, as, as the board, just the overall TIF money. And, and just as part of you, obviously, whether the majority, that just come right out, we'll just start with that. When we talk about the, how we're going to spend this money and the other 128,000, we start with that, if that's what you want to start with, and say, okay, here's what we're going to commit with to start with and go forward with that.
Why wouldn't we commit to what we had, this board had previously committed to?
Yeah.
And that, that number is in all of the numbers that we've considered for TIF spending.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I don't know why we need to change a thing. Make the agreement, make it strong and that if, I think we, I think the board is divided. I think we need to have, to bring this to a vote. And there'll be a week for anybody that's interested to contact any of us individually and give us their opinions before the first round, the first vote. Let's get it on the table. Let's make a decision. And, and if it is decided by the majority not to fund that project, then we have further work to do, to figure in more sessions to figure out how to spend that money. But I, I think we need to just get it in front of us.
I don't think the board's divided. I mean, I, they're divided on as far as honoring the old contract. Now, if they present a new one, it's exactly the same.
The old contract can't be on, it's gone.
Right. I don't think there's any division, you know, with, if we had something new in front of us to consider, but-
So do you want to direct these two to, to draw up a new contract?
You could actually vote on it quicker than you might imagine. The hospital presented some, basically an ordinance that amends the old contract, but I look at it as entering into a new one with language in there that takes away the deadline and changes substantial completion. If you, if you want to vote on that, that's the key to the whole thing. To amend it, to enter into a new one, you've got to deal with the fact that the timelines are well past, and you've got to change the, the name of the game of substantial completion to more of a white box definition. You, that, we, we've had that. We've had it, but it, it's been looked at as, let's vote on this versus in the context of what are, what are the other options? Or do we have other options? That's not been voted-
So we have, we have a, a draft ordinance that we can get at the next meeting to, to vote on this.
It could be ready.
And based on what Frank said, we want to change a little of the language to not, not imply that it's an extension of the-
Negotiate with the other parties and figure something out, put something in front of us.
Well, the, the old agreement was fairly elaborate. You know, you got the TIF attorneys and you got the hospital's attorneys and the developers' attorneys all looking at it. And it went through different phases. But really, what you're doing is saying, we want to, we want to adopt, we can, we can use the old agreement and, and-
Only two things are changing. The date of the agreement and the definition of substantial completion. Right? Is there anything else that changes?
Well, yeah, there's lots of things that can no longer apply because we're at the end.
Just do it.
Well, I mean, we're-
It's clear what you're doing.
It's going to be a two-page agreement instead of a 10-page agreement.
Oh, right. Right. The TIF agreement allows us to do land acquisition.
Well, you, you can't quite go that short of, to use TIF funding, this board has to, has to say this, there's certain findings you have to make in order to spend TIF money.
I, I trust-
You can't just say, white box by October the 20th.
I trust that you will guide us like you always do and make sure that we do it legally. Get us, put us a document so we can vote on it. It's one minute till the regular meeting starts.
Yeah. So, draw, draw the new, draw the new agreement for the next meeting. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will, uh-
That's a shame.
We'll just table it.
He's just going to discuss it when the ordinance comes forward. I, I kind of hope we have work sessions, but we can do it during the regular meeting.
We're just going to talk about, is that right? We'll just talk about the cars whenever it comes up. I mean, I, I know there's an ordinance out there that you can, you may or may not want to act on, or however you want to act on it. But Eric could just present all that. We'll just talk about when it comes up in the regular meeting instead of getting a little preview of it in the work sessions. Well, are we ready?
America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Grimmer, Alderwoman Padwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Muzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, okay, we'll go to, uh, Scott here.
No.
Here.
Okay.
I will tell you, however, that she called me because there were, I had reported that there was some discussion about the use of that property just north of Gage for Community Garden. And she wanted to inform you that the downtown revitalization board has not loaded on or committed to a community garden. It was just a conceptual discussion they were having. And so they were a little concerned about the impression that the newspaper article left was that this was a project they were going after full, full force. And it's just one of the many things they're considering.
Okay. Um, I think you, okay, next, we got a status update on the water main replacement project. And I think we have supply here to talk, and we can talk about that.
Hi, I'm Jenny Bretzke, and I'm an engineer with Cochran. And I've been working with Chris and Dave on the water main design. And I, I think the main update that I have, since we sent the status report on Tuesday, was we did get the copy of the permit approval from Department of Natural Resources. So we have the, the approval for construction from them. So that was the main thing I had. And I'm available as far as if anybody has any questions on the project.
That's approval on the whole project, the whole, the whole class?
Right.
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
We have a financial advisor that's now putting, working with us to put together the, the financing for, for the, the project. And were we to able to secure financing, but not for the total amount, and therefore we could only do elements of this project? How long is that permit in effect? Does it expire at some point, or? You can get back to me if you'd like.
Yeah, I may have to check on that. But we could certainly break the, easily break the project into sections, since it's, it's set up as six different sub-projects. So we could easily do that.
But it seems that after a certain point, your, your construction permission is no longer good because they don't want it to be forever, since standards change and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
I didn't know how long it was. It's okay.
Yeah, I can get back to you on that.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thanks for coming. Um, Martin?
It's in here somewhere. No, I've written on mine.
Just sitting here looking at it.
Be patient.
Ah, there it is.
We've had discussions about the use of the TIF funds, and obviously, they do not include the trail that we had anticipated. So MODOT has asked me to formally notify them that we're not going to proceed with that project so they can make that allocation elsewhere. And I did that.
What trail? What was the Parkwood Trail? Was this the biking path from town to the, what, what project is this?
From the end of Parkwood to progress to Parkway. Yeah.
Yeah. And MODOT was involved because-
It was a grant. We received a, a grant from them.
But did we, what have we done with that grant money? Did we send it back to them? Or how's that work?
We, we, it's, the, the project has been designed.
What was our portion of that grant, Martin? Remember? Money wise, remember what it was?
Seventy-five. No, it was a 75-25 grant.
Okay.
But we spent $27,000 of the MODOT money in the, in the design of that project. And if we're not going to proceed with the project, there entitled reimbursement. That's one of the TIF expenditures you've seen as we've been going through this.
So we'll have to pay that 27,000?
That 27,000 has to be paid back.
All right. Will that design be something that, it'll, it'll always be there in case-
Good forever.
Right. I mean, in case we're doing it down the road. Yeah.
So also from MODOT, we, we, we received the notice that for the release, that they, the funds. Now, they've got to send their approval, the regional, the district approval to, to Jefferson City. We haven't heard back from them yet, but there's no reason to believe that there would be a problem. It's just a timing issue.
What, what are the opportunities of spending any of that phase four, I guess, or whatever phase of the hiking bike trail, right? The core money?
This is not the core money.
I, I understand. But that, you know, I'm not able to come up with what I'm talking about very clearly.
The recreation part of it.
The recreation, yeah. The monies that we already have, that we gathered through taxes, do we have any opportunities to spend any of that money ourselves?
You want me to answer that question?
Go ahead.
We've been meeting with MODOT, I mean, MODOT, with the Corps of Engineers over that issue. And, and we authorized them, by prior action of this body, to complete their final report and to identify ways in which the city can spend the money that we have.
Right.
And get credit for it, should we ever, they ever get funded for the completion of the project. Our concern was that if we went out and spent the money without their approval, five years from now, they say, well, okay, we're going to, then they wouldn't give us credit for what we did. That, that would be a use that could be considered, getting their prior approval, so that we then could spend money for that and get credit for it.
So if we were to develop a project or conceptualize a project, the next step would be to present that to, for their approval?
Well, when, when they do their final report, it will need to include-
That.
That.
Got it. When do they plan on ever doing that?
Well, it's a good question.
Should it work, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it is. They got people in town. Actually, I got a letter from an angry citizen who they contacted. She wasn't very happy.
The report's supposed to be done by end of the summer, okay?
Right.
And submitted. So once they get that approval done, now, we're not sure what the recreation part of it. the recreation part of it totally looks like yet, but. Okay, that, that, thank you.
Martin, what made that citizen angry?
They were asking for an easement.
Okay.
And, uh, she said that the city wanted to buy the property, she'd be happy to sell it to us, we could use it for whatever purpose it chooses, but short of that, she was not interested in granting it.
Really?
There you go.
Uh, we're making progress with the financial advisor, uh, we have, um, what, pardon me?
I don't think he's, you talked about?
Not cover Main Street Trail?
Right.
No, I said, they're, they're, okay, well, MODOT is, is releasing the funds, but we have to wait for Jefferson City to.
This on the other trail. I don't hear about it. This is on the Main Street Trail.
So my hope is that we will get the certificates of participation for the water privately placed, because it's a much shorter, less expensive process, and we have those, institutions, the financial institutions have been asked to, invited to, to participate and to give us proposals. The problem is that, that we really need, for cash flow purposes, to go out fifteen years, and the financial institutions are generally doing on lease purchase ten years, so we're kind of asking them to push the envelope a little bit, uh, so that the cash flow works with what we budgeted for, for debt service. I talked to one of them that we're sending it to personally, and he said, well, and I'm like, yeah, but yeah, we'll probably work something out, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that will, will go well.
What are the, what's that one point two certificate? That's supposed to say?
One point two, one point two is the most we expect this water project.
Well, I know it just says one point two.
It says a dollar twenty-six.
Oh, million.
A dollar twenty-six?
It's a, one point two million.
Oh, thank you. I just, that's what I thought it was.
Thank you.
I want to clarify this one minute.
Um, we had discussion about the use of the, the building, I met with Piva, um, they are currently having their equipment layout done by, I don't think they're doing that in-house, are they? They've got somebody professionally doing that, so, uh, they, they are interested in entering to an agreement on the use of that space, uh, however, we're kind of waiting to see what the, how the equipment layout goes, because it could be sooner than later that they're going to need to use it for their equipment, in which case, they'll be exercising their option, and we won't need a supplementary agreement like we talked about before.
When they exercise their option, they exercise their option for the same amount as what the rest of the guy, but.
I, I did, just as a matter of fact, I was over there this afternoon, and I think they're, they're still looking at the, the option of using it for storage, the option that they kind of threw at us a couple weeks ago, of using it for storage for a couple years, and then going back.
If that's what they want to do, then we'll need a supplemental agreement to cover that.
I think that's kind of the direction they're going, but they were waiting for some input back from Italy, I believe.
Nine hundred, nine oh one is undergoing some substantial remodeling downstairs of the space that Don Richard works out of. We did some work to kind of facilitate the putting down a new floor, because there's a floor drain that comes up that, even though we've plugged it, it still seeps, and they want to put new flooring over it, so we're using some of the patching material that that they use on the, on the manholes. It's an epoxy that should stop that. But Don called me and wanted to, me to let you know, and those who are viewing this, that nine hundred nine oh one will be off the air starting Monday.
You mean nine ninety?
Nine ninety.
Nine ninety-one.
Nine ninety-one, whatever.
You don't subscribe.
I can't keep up with these changing numbers.
You don't watch that, do you?
Uh, yes, I do, but I watch it online.
Don, Don gave a very nice presentation last night on the channel with the What's New program, and he talked about the equipment upgrades and the remodeling that will be taking place downstairs. So if anybody wants to see that, it will be available on the nine ninety and nine, ninety-one YouTube channel.
But what he wanted to, to let everyone know is they'll be off the air for six, maybe seven days, starting Monday. We met with the Williams, they're here tonight, and they will make a presentation under the, citizens to be heard, who've had some water problems on, uh, Westwood, and, um, they want to talk to you about that. And I, I met with Bader surveying, uh, the county employed them to do the surveying of the ball fields, uh, we have a tentative, preliminary, uh, plat from, from Bader on that. We talked about doing, um, the Merchant Street survey, and, uh, and making sure that whatever the county does, or we do, relative to dealing the property to the school district, reserves the easements we need for the, the trail that we'll be going through there in the near future. So that's all kind of set and ready to go.
Questions, anybody? We'll go right into the staff report, Petrie.
Good evening. Most everything is covered in my report, but I did want to mention a couple of things. One is, is that we did receive preliminary approval for the grant application for the GIS mapping system, um, which is kind of exciting. Um, we're in the, the phase where they really investigate the matter more fully, and, um, will enter into a grant, a grant agreement as soon as that process is, is through, and hopefully, um, we'll, we'll get the final okay. Just a reminder that we are needing a aldermanic liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission, the Heritage Commission, um, so whoever might be interested, love to have you. Um, we are having our mini-retreat, um, here on May ninth, uh, nine to eleven, um, in this room, so I don't know if I'd call it retreat, but that's what we're calling it right now. I know it does, doesn't it? I said I might bring muffins or something, I don't know.
Uh, I, talk about how that fits into the certified local government.
So, um, in the certified local government program, to be certified, we have to have so much, so many hours of training per year, and, uh, last year, we really didn't accomplish that because of the transition between the, the former planning and zoning person and myself, but, um, this, uh, what we're going to do is going to go through our design guidelines pretty thoroughly, and make sure that everybody understands, um, what they mean, and kind of work through some examples of that, so, um, it will count toward our, our credit, you know, um, when they decide whether we will retain our certified local government status. But we'll, I'm hoping to have a couple of educational system, um, programs throughout the year, one being, we, we're seeing an influx of people wanting to go from their asphalt shingle roofs to metal roofs, and it used to be that they were standing seam roofs, and now they have all these new systems, and it's a little confusing, I think, certainly to me and others, what is appropriate, and, and, you know, what we would decide in, in most cases, and so that we can give some direction to applicants. It's, uh, grass season, and, um, as you know, it rains here a lot, and so, grass will grow, darn it, every week it has to be cut. And, uh, so, uh, my, my notice book, and Bob's notice book is already revved up, ready to go, we've already made some contacts, and if you have, you know, we're out as much as we can be, and certainly, you know, this is something we want to keep on top of, but the plan is, is that they'll get one courtesy notice, and then if the, the grass is not cut, and weeds not taken care of within a week, then they will get a court summons. Um, I think it's the only way to keep after folks and, and let them know we're serious about maintaining their yards. But if you have somebody in your districts that, you know, you see, and it, it's not moving, and somehow we've missed them, please let me know. We're more than happy to take a run out and, and tag them, so.
Could you remind people what the?
Seven inches.
Seven?
Preferably to have it cut routinely enough that it doesn't ever get to seven inches. That's, you know, the goal, um, and.
Any of these yards, you see, like, some areas, the grass is really tall, and in other areas, it's not, probably out of compliance.
Right, right, right.
You gotta go by the.
You gotta go by the stuff that's up against the house, where it's harder to trim, and that sort of thing, definitely. I think, you know, we try, our goal is to get the grass cut. I mean, that's the bottom line, and, you know, because it does rain, and the grass will grow, this is something that we're going to tell folks, you know, we don't want to have to come out here and tag you every other week. I mean, get with the program, if you own property, cut the grass. It's pretty simple. But we'll give them a chance to get it done, because I know that sometimes things come up. I did want to bring up the issue that I raised in, in my report about, uh, these vacation rental by owner properties. We're starting to see, we've already seen four that we know of, um, where owners are taking their rental properties and putting them out on these websites for vacation rental by owner. And it really does fall within the definition that we've provided for bed and breakfast, but we think that we need to clarify in our zoning code where those are allowed, and what we would need to do. So, um, we'll be working on getting maybe a zoning amendment to the, the Planning Commission in early May, then it would be brought to you in, um, I guess, the second week in, in May.
Petrie?
Yeah, sure.
When we have business owners here in town that are, you know, starving to death for customers at bed and breakfast, um, will our ordinance be, with the proposed ordinance that kind of says, are your feelings that it would be, uh, protective of those businesses, or more allowing to the vacation by owner?
Well, it, it's a little bit complicated, because if you think about it, you know, an owner of a house could rent out their house, and under our bed and breakfast law, it does, it says a bed and breakfast is a transient lodging facility with less than ten rooms rented out to guests. So technically, somebody could rent out their house, and, you know, the, the upside is, you know, for us is that if they do do that, it provides for more space for people to come, you know, when the bed and breakfast fill up, there, you know, where do we send them?
It also takes away from?
It, it could, it definitely could.
Their business when they're not filled up, and.
And it could. Um, I think, you know, we'll have to see how this goes, and this is a new phenomenon, and I think it's, you're going to see it more than opening a full-blown bed and breakfast, because a lot of these, they don't serve breakfast, they just are providing the house, you're on your own with your kitchen and whatnot. The other thing is, it's important, is the reason why we want to look at this, not just to know what's going on, but because we want to get that bed and bath tax. And that's one way to even, you know, the, the playing field, um, to make sure that, you know, they're, they're, they're paying, the guests are paying for, you know, the, that tax, just like a bed and breakfast would have to do.
War one certainly has, has a lot of B and Bs, and I want to make sure we do our best to protect those investments that those folks have made against somebody that just, you know, has a house they want to rent out for a weekend or two at a time.
Well, so far, the ones that we have looked at, and we know about, actually, the owners have gone to a lot of work and a lot of money to put, get those in the kind of shape that most people would rent. I don't think the VRBO market, and there's different websites, but that's, that was the one that kind of started the whole phenomenon, um, is that, you know, that, they're, they're pretty nice, and they have to be pretty nice for people to take the chance on going to someone's home. And so, the, the four that I know of, the owners have spent quite a bit of money getting those houses ready for that, that type of activity. We just have a, one of the houses on North Main that is basically, the house was in pretty bad condition, was a, was a house that had been flooded, and they're really doing a nice job with that house, and I.
We have bed and breakfasts that are only a few blocks away from there, that, you know, would like to have more business.
And, and I'd like to know what, how the neighbors of those properties feel about that. That's a totally different scenario than having somebody that's living there for an extended period of time, even though renting, as opposed to a constant rotation of people.
Another reason why.
I don't know that I'd be that crazy about that if it was next to my house.
Well, I think that's part of the reason why we, we need to look at it from a zoning perspective, because right now, they would technically fall within the bed and breakfast definition, and right now, our zoning code says it can only happen in R2, but then.
But a bed and breakfast has staff that's there to deal with, just like a hotel, I mean, there's, there's workers there that are overseeing it, whereas this.
And I think this is, this is good that we're talking about all these issues, because I think it's just a phenomenon that we just, you know, our, our code doesn't fit, it doesn't fit nicely within.
No, it doesn't.
And so, I think we do have to look at it, and one way that we can do that is we can say, you can operate as a VRBO with a special use permit, and there, we would have some control over, you know, how many people could be there, how many cars could be there, that sort of thing.
There's a lot of open area there where, then they can say, well, there's nothing that says you can't. Wouldn't they have a business license?
Yeah. They would have to have a business license as well.
Petrie, today, there's nothing that says, I couldn't go rent a house from him for two weeks.
That's right. There isn't. Although, it, it would technically fall within, because if you, it, the, the definition of transient is less than one month. If you stay less than one month, then you're considered transient. It's kind of a bad word, because it makes it sound like homeless people.
Yeah.
That's not what it means. So, um, anything less than a month is transient, um, and so, it would fall already in the, the bed and breakfast designation.
Thank you for taking a hard look at that.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, when they come in, it's like, ah, what do we do? It doesn't fit neatly, and I just think you're going to see more of that, which actually is, I think, a test to, hopefully, to increase in people wanting to come down and stay here, that these folks think that they can, you know, renovate a building and make money at it, so, um, that, that, that could be seen as a good thing, so, um, I don't really have anything else.
One more question for Petrie. The nuisance violations at one ninety-one South Seventh Street, a letter has been sent to the tenant, what is the next step, and who will the next step take place? So we stay right on this and aggressively pursue this type of nuisance?
Yes. Um, I hand-delivered the letter, and I spoke to him about it, um, today, actually. All of the, we can't limit him from bringing his pickup truck home, just like any other business that involves pick, but he has to get rid of the debris and the junk before he gets home. He has told me that most of it is gone, he needed until Monday to get rid of one more of them, and I said, that would be fine, but Monday, it's got to be gone. He has cut the grass. I told him, because of the backyard constantly being full of stuff, that he needs to think about investing in a fence, privacy fence, so that, you know, he can do what he wants in his backyard, but it not really impact the neighbors. So, he knows, and, you know, I told him, I don't want to have to be dealing with him every other week.
So what is the next step if he doesn't meet your requirements?
Uh, the next step would be to find him in violation of the zoning code, and, um, give him a court summons, and bring him.
And we will aggressively pursue that.
Yes, we will, yeah.
I mean, we just have to start setting a strong standard with the folks in town. There's a rock wall that's fallen out of the street on the corner of Seraphin and Fourth Street in multiple places.
Right.
That's, that's going to, that's a real nuisance.
Yep.
Have, have we made contact with the owner of that?
We haven't. Martin and I talked a little bit about it, and, and it kind of, it, it did fall a little bit lower on the priority scale, only because there isn't a sidewalk on that side of the street, but it's on my.
You want, you want to hit a car, a rock that big in a small car?
Yeah, no.
That's an issue.
It would be bad.
We need to make sure everything on our priority list moves forward continuously.
You know, the only, the only houses that we seem to have a problem with are the ones that the owners are not here, and there aren't even tenants in the building. This, this house at three oh two South Gabrie, for example, the owners won't accept any kind of certified letter, um, they live in Florida, um, you know.
So what's our next step there?
You know, our next step would be to take some aggressive action, almost to the degree of, of seeking to demolish the building. I mean, it was also quite damaged from fire, from what I understand. It's not as big an eyesore, and it certainly is not in a prominent location for most people to see it, but the house is in, in pretty poor condition. No one sought to live there, but, I mean, you get to the point where, what are our options, and I think, you know, in other cities, certainly, ones that I've been affiliated with, they will go to that next step if they have to.
What can we do?
If that's the house that's been, that's been that way.
It's so hard when.
It's been that way for quite a while.
Or absentee owners.
It's right, it, it's right at, uh, third and, and South Gabrie.
That's, okay.
The, the, the doors are barred, uh, boarded up.
Yeah, it's plotted.
And I even had put in my letters, you know, like, the back door is open, but I'm not going onto that property, and I don't know who might be in there, and so, you know, it is kind of, it's an attractive nuisance, too, um, because you don't know who might be going in there and, and hanging out illegally, but when we have owners that won't even respond or accept the letter from us, you know, we're starting to get, and, I mean, they don't even know, they haven't even opened the letter to know what. you know, we're starting to get, I mean, they don't even know, they haven't even opened the letter to know what contact they're about, much less...
Well, I would say the fact that they're not accepting it kind of gives you a clue they know what it's about.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you for the work, the hard work between your staff, but please stay very aggressive. Well, we just went through this last couple of years of dealing with these issues, and, you know, it just seems like it, somehow, we've got to go faster. And I know there's, we're limited, but please, please stay active.
Well, that's why with the weeds, especially now, is, you know, keeping up on them every week and making sure that things don't get out of hand. And, you know, we will be aggressive about it, because I think we need to be, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening, everyone. Well, for starters, I'd like to note that we went an entire month without a main break. Hasn't happened in some time, so... We already got the no month with the break, so... Another note, you know, last meeting, I mentioned the DNR inspection, I thought it went pretty well. We did get our report back, and it was a good report, no deviations report at any of our facilities, so...
Remember, they still came up with a few ways that they suggested we spend our money.
Yes, they did make, some of the recommendations involved security around our well field. It's been noted in previous reports over the years, I look back through a few of them. There's no security, no barbed wire fence. So that will be something we're looking into.
Just a locked door, right?
That's it. Other than that, a pretty quiet month with the addition of the new skate assistance.
That was a great thing there, wasn't it?
It is a great thing, yeah. Through the, through the big storm we had last month, it never, never went down.
I think we should congratulate Glenn and Duane on being trained, competent persons.
Yeah, that's actually a pretty big deal.
It is, we...
I don't know what that means, but, I mean, it just sounds kind of funny.
They can take training on to the next level, right? They can have a trainer-trainer situation?
That means they're competent.
Well, yeah.
Well, competent person training is where the, where the staff has been trained to identify hazards in the workplace. Whether you're digging in a ditch or a trench, and you can see the, see the wall getting ready to break off, you can notify the other staff. Any safety, safety items, PPE items, the guys may be needing. Just helps identify all the hazards. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Kenny has not was alive, so, yeah, I think you got his report there. Sandra?
Good evening, everyone. You have some information in front of you, just some of our statistics for the month of March. We had our first day, over a hundred people, and March was our first month, over a thousand people. We had 1,166 guests through the Welcome Center. That was up eighteen percent over this year, last year, this time, or this month last year. I've got some notes for you there on various outreach things. We're going to be having St. Genevieve brochures at the Cardinals' home game next week in St. Louis, courtesy of the membership that we maintain in the St. Louis Convention and Visitors Commission, because we are one of those attractions you can see. You saw my note there about how ASL Pewter was going to be featured in the May issue of 573 Magazine, which I said you could see online. Well, the issue came today, so these are available down at the Welcome Center. We'll get some up here to City Hall, too. So if anyone would like to see this, I'll have copies on the table afterwards that you can take a look at. And the, the release is out now, so I can tell you who the famous person was who was here very quietly in January filming for the cable TV show called Who Do You Think You Are? Melissa Etheridge was here in January. And so you can see that show this Sunday night, April 26, at nine o'clock Central on the TLC channel. And she basically, that show is about genealogy, and they take famous people and trace their roots and find out where they're from. So Melissa Etheridge traced her roots to her five times great-grandfather on her maternal side, to Quebec, Canada, and then also to Kaskaskia, and finally to St. Genevieve. Her five times great-grandfather was the person that built the Green Tree Tavern, Nicholas Janice. So pretty famous building here in St. Genevieve, pretty famous person. And Bob Mueller helped her out with some of the research in the county courthouse and the archives. And he said that in looking at her family tree, she actually has like, almost like a St. Genevieve who's who of St. Genevieve's early founders, who are also members of her family in various ways. So that's pretty cool. Want to bring your attention to the last item there, event reminder. This weekend's a very busy weekend in St. Genevieve. Tomorrow, of course, is the fourth Friday, sponsored by the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. It also happens to be the evening that the hospital is going to put on their 5K race to raise awareness for women's health issues. All that will be going on downtown. And the Herald has invited a special guest artist to come to St. Genevieve. And they decided, and I'm glad they did, that the best place to invite her to do her thing is at the Welcome Center. So we're going to be hosting that artist on behalf of the Herald. And she paints live painting to live music. So there will be live music and live painting in the Welcome Center tomorrow night. So come out, it'll be a big time, that's all part of the art walk. Also, this weekend is the Spring into Downtown. This is a new event that's being fronted by the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. It's the first time we've had this one. And basically, it's an opportunity for all the shops downtown to do a little bit of specials, maybe some clearance merchandise. And because of the mission of Downtown Renewal for not just businesses, but also residents, anyone within the footprint of Downtown that wanted to have, or the Downtown Renewal Program that wanted to have a yard sale the same time period is invited to do so. And that starts tomorrow and goes through Saturday. And the St. Vincent de Paul is going to be holding their yard sale the same two days. So if you want to get a good deal, get out early tomorrow. And then finally, this weekend is also the Annual School of the Soldier, or in French, that's called the École des Soldats. And we have information about that down at the Welcome Center as well. Basically, they're meeting all day on Saturday. In the morning, they'll be at the Welcome Center with various historic topics presented. It is free and open to the public, so if you'd just like to get a little more information about some of the history and significance of our area, feel free to come down to the Welcome Center and join in the fun on Saturday. And if you hear loud booms on Sunday afternoon, or Saturday afternoon, that's going to be the cannons that they're firing down by the Moses Austin House, so brace yourselves. Anyway, but I'll leave these on the table, yes?
Sandra, you said TLC channel, on here, your report says Discovery.
It's Discovery TLC, I think, yeah, they're... Yeah, I think it must be the same, because on their news release, it said it was interchangeable. But I think on your channel operator, you know, like on your channel, it might be TLC, but it's a Discovery Network.
Okay, thank you.
So you're welcome. I'll set these here in case anyone wants to look at them. I have to break. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening. Well, I just see on my report, we started to do some patching, and then we started on Main Street. And then it started raining, so. And that meant, like Petrie said, the grass started growing, so we've been trying to get caught up on that. And then we're working on the ball fields again, so we're trying to, I had to send a couple of guys up to the park to help mow to catch up with that. But, yeah, we don't want to hurt a sentinel citation to us, so we're trying to get as much grass done as we can. Get a couple of patches on Second Street. And we start putting mosquito biscuits out. And that reminds me, since we're not fogging mosquitoes this year, we're asking everybody to please, you know, empty all water containers in your yard, just a little bit of water, beer can or whatever, you know, produce mosquitoes, so check your gutters out.
We officially out of fogging material? Sorry.
Okay, well, but, yeah, we're just, we're going to need a lot of help this year from the people. I mean, mosquitoes are out, they've been out for a couple of months already.
Oh, yeah.
They just ain't biting like they will be. Yeah, anytime there's any kind of water container at all, especially tars, that's the worst, so...
The only thing they can do, like, if they can't dump it after, I've heard you could maybe drip a little...
You could put vegetable oil. You can dump a little, because what happens when it's in the poop stage, what they call that? It looks like a little worm that comes up to get air, so if you smother it, then it dies, so... Like the mosquito biscuits that we put out, they're good for thirty days. But we're unable to put them in storm drains and everything right now because of the rain. Throw them in, we're wasting money, so when it's hot and dry, then we'll throw them in. We went all the way through the field down there, put it in ditches. Anytime there's a water source, we try to put them in. Our backhoe's broke down right now, we're waiting on a hose to come in, so...
So you said we're out of the stuff you sprayed, is that a permanent situation, or is this...
Well, last year, well, this year...
See, I'm a new guy here, so you've got to fill me in.
Okay, but the board decided not to fog mosquitoes this year because of budget, so...
Understandable, okay.
I do have a few gallons left, but I mean, it's not enough to do...
I, I understand. I just didn't know it was a temporary scenario.
Well, depends on you now, if you don't give me any money.
Right. Got plenty of people clamoring for that.
Yeah. And while I was gone, in the hospital, the guys took all the snow equipment and everything off, so... Of course, the other week, whenever you seen us riding around with snow plows on, that's to push mud. It seems to work pretty good, so...
Is there a reason we didn't order the new mower soon enough to have it by now?
I was in the hospital, so I don't know the answer to that question.
I didn't want to order it when you first approved it, because it would have just sat in the shed waiting for, we could pay rent on something for it. Then we ordered it and got the combination together, so I don't know.
No, no particular reason, just worked out, though, gotcha.
I mean, the reason why I didn't order it in the winter.
You didn't have a snow plow on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else for Dave? All right, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
It doesn't really have to do with Dave in particular, but his report reminded me that this last time where flash flood, it's so bad in town, we live within where they place the barriers, and I can't tell you how many people drive right around those barriers. And it's so frustrating, because they're there for a reason. And even if the water has gone down, they're still there because the guys are cleaning up what's left. And if you drive through, you're going to be in their way, and it could be a dangerous situation even after the water's gone down. So please, people, don't drive through the barriers.
I can tell you about an experience where he had to respond to someone who was bored. Why didn't he get through it?
Jim Wright used to settle down, can't fix stupid.
Good evening.
All right.
How are you guys? Hi, Chief. You have my report in front of you. I'm happy to announce that we have hired a tenth officer that brings us back up to full staff. It's a gentleman out of Jefferson County area named Nick Cusinelli, fifteen-year law enforcement veteran, works in Hillsborough currently. Owns his own canines, he has two canines, one that's seasoned and one pup that is, that is trained and is up and coming. So we are strongly investigating utilizing that and the logistics of that, legality of that, and sure, insurance and everything is up to, up to par for that.
Chief Bennett, would you feel comfortable, or maybe you wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, we've talked about the reasons why police officers from St. Genevieve go to other communities, and it's usually more pay. So fifteen-year officer, an officer of fifteen years of experience coming to St. Genevieve, what kind of motivation was there for him?
Benefits. Hours, the schedule. Most of his career was in De Soto, they work the same schedule, we have the twelve-hour schedule. He does have a family. Like I said, he's seasoned and experienced, and that's where the benefit really helps us, is acquiring people that aren't...
That's great.
Yeah, that aren't subject to jump at a dollar necessarily, but realize the significance of our, of our health benefits.
That's a great report to me.
Yes, and he is friends with the canine handler that works for the county, Chuck Oaks. In fact, that's who made the referral here, you know, he complimented the department. And so we'll have a good working relationship there. And I believe he has some ties to the area.
Yes, he does.
Grandpa, I believe you said?
No, father-in-law.
Father-in-law, okay. So we're anxious to get him on there and get him, get him trained, so... One thing that I didn't have in the report, we were notified yesterday that we were approved for the Community Development Fund grant application that we made that's put on through the St. Genevieve County Community Foundation, which was to purchase ballistic vests for the officers. So we will schedule a fitting for those pretty quickly and get those put in. So we'd like to thank them for approving it, and thank you guys for allowing us to put in for it. Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed something somewhere along that. Do we have body cameras then?
We don't. I recently attended a training session in Kansas City that was put on by our insurance company, looking at not only the legality, the expense of purchasing the cameras, but also the expense of maintaining the data that's on there. And it's certainly something that I don't want to enter into until we're, until we're forced to, or until we have all of our ducks in a row. I don't want to go into it half-prepared and not have a, an efficient method for retrieving those videos or a sufficient policy for what would meet the criteria to record. So we are still investigating that, and it was a very good class. And there were some other representatives from other agencies that, that had implemented the body cameras and other agencies that were like us, that were still just investigating it.
Chief, I'd just like to take opportunity to thank you for serving as the president of the Chamber of Commerce over the last twelve months.
Thank you.
I think you did a great job. I think that anybody that had the fortune to attend the Chamber banquet last Friday night, you did an excellent job representing the city as a Chamber member and the Chamber president, so well done.
I appreciate that. It was, it was a very nice event, a nice banquet. The staff there, the committee that put that on, I think, did an excellent job, so. And I liked, I loved having it in town, that was just phenomenal. And Shawmet is a wonderful venue, but not having to drive out there was very nice.
Not having the tent sites blow up and the whole wind, too.
Although, of all the evenings, it would have been nice to have the tent. You know, every other year, we're out there, it's ten below, it seems like, and this was a phenomenal evening, but it was very nice to have it in town, so... I make mention of a proposal that's on the agenda to replace some vehicles. We didn't get to discuss that in the work session. I can certainly field questions now if you guys are comfortable with that, or we can wait until it comes up on the agenda.
You can talk about it now, I would think.
Okay. One thing, and I don't know if you want to reference the ordinance that's on there, but one thing that I didn't actually see in that ordinance, and that I'd like to clear up, is I'm not asking for expenditure of ninety-nine thousand dollars tonight. This is a lease purchase proposal. It would be a twenty-two thousand-ish annual payment for five years on that. And again, it doesn't, it doesn't state that necessarily because of the timeframe that we have to enter into it until we get the funding and secure that. They're kind of limited on when they can pull the trigger and give us those, those figures, but it is locked in at the, at the 2.375% interest, which is better than we've ever gotten for the, for the purchase of the vehicles. 2.375. I contacted the lease company that we've always used, the company that we have used the last several purchases. And they, the first state community blew them out of the water. It was, it was more than a full percentage point li, lower than, than the first capital that we had used in the, in the past. Correct.
I apologize for my memory, this is a budgeted item.
This, it is not, but this is...
That's, I thought my memory was remem, but...
Right, but, but the first payment is scheduled to, to pay in 2016 budget. So it would be something that I would ask for at that time and certainly go into the budget time. This was an item that was, that was asked for in the budget, actually, the last three budgets, I believe, two budgets for sure, that was not funded. This was an item that was asked for in the budget, actually the last three budgets, I believe, two budgets for sure, that was not funded. So I'm just making a proposal this time. I mean, I believe, to answer part of that question, I believe we will be at least this amount under budget with the police department, so I don't anticipate a huge additional expenditure to the city's budget. However, you know, anything can happen between now and then.
I think it's just jumping a gun to have this in the ordinance when it's not on the, you know, we're not in the budget season for next year, and why do we need to, help me, I'm asking an honest question. Why do we need to address this now? What is the benefit of addressing it now? Is it simply a low financing rate, or is there more to it?
More so the ability to go on and order the cars and get them on the road, because we need the cars on the road.
So we can take ownership of these cars right away and not have to pay.
We can take ownership and not have to make the first payment until the next budget year.
So you wouldn't receive the cars in June of sixteen?
No, we would, assuming after the second reading is done, I could go on and order the cars, and when they're ready, we can put them in service, and the first payment would come out of that budget at that time.
I think we're gonna have to discuss that, and we'll be setting a budget item. We've had no real discussions on budgets, and maybe just the department, your department's budget and look at, for you two, you'll be coming in, might help us be more comfortable talking about this, but this, again, seems like we're jumping a gun.
And one of my conversations with Brian Boyd, the representative that I was speaking with, in addition to Terry Luttermeyer, was getting it still in this year's budget. I don't believe that that was relayed to Mr. Luttermeyer when he prepared the documents. I think it's still certainly something that we can investigate and pay for out of this year's budget with an amendment.
Well, but we also would be paying for it for the next four years' budget, so we need to think about that and make those, I mean.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But then at the same time, are we down three cars right now?
We're down one car right now, but the repair cost for the other two Impalas is really mounting. I mean, really, hasn't exceeded the purchase.
Are you looking at the repair cost of twenty-six thousand dollars?
Between the two, yes. And I believe the purchase price on them was right around twenty thousand apiece. I mean, I would anticipate, unless conditions improve, that we will end up paying more in repair costs. And that's not including maintenance costs, this isn't the regularly scheduled maintenance or batteries or tires.
Can we afford to be down three cars?
No.
Think that pretty well, take care of that.
I guess I got a lot of problems with this. Number one, why wouldn't this brought to our attention before? I mean, there is a solution to the Charger, we can put a brand-new motor in it.
Yes.
And number two, why ain't we getting any life out of these cars? I mean, I take the Sheriff's Department up, and they got a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, and this Dodge has got, what, sixty thousand on it? With a bad motor, I don't, I mean.
Well, and I think it's certainly, certainly.
I mean, they don't run no harder than we do, they probably run them harder out on the open road than we can in town.
Which is probably harder on our cars, running stop sign to stop sign, the life of their, the life of the vehicle. You know, I have plenty of documentation showing that we regularly maintain these, they get oil changes every three thousand miles.
I mean, like a Charger for, what, five thousand dollars? We can put a brand-new motor with five-year, hundred-thousand-mile warranty for five thousand dollars. We probably should've done it at the beginning, spending three thousand.
That's a two thousand and seven, so we're gonna put a new motor in a two thousand and seven car?
Okay, what's it worth? Hardly anything right now, so you might as well put.
So we put five thousand in, and then it's worth four thousand if we do that, if we put five thousand into it?
We got six or sixty-five, what was it, seven thousand for the last one?
I think we got eighty-five for one and ninety-five for the other.
But you're gonna get nothing with a bad motor now.
Well, I mean, unfortunately.
I'm pretty sure that every month, there's something in his report about cars.
The last two months, I have reported that these three cars were problematic. You know, unfortunately, in a business that requires and is dependent on a vehicle fleet, we have to have replacement.
I understand that, but that's been sitting up at Mr. Yates' for what, a month and a half, two months now? With the bad motor that we could've long had fixed and back on the road. We talk about, we're down this car, we're down that, there's reasons they're down. I mean, I'm sorry, but these cars is about to sound like a fire truck. And I'm sorry, this is.
Well, I understand, but in January, we paid twenty-five hundred on the upper part of the motor, which we knew was bad at that time.
You spent the five thousand and got warranty.
But hindsight's twenty-twenty, I didn't know that the bottom was.
The hindsight ain't here no more.
We certainly got.
We need to start making better decisions when we spend money.
Well, and we got the estimates, and we got bids, and we took it to different places, and that was the best estimate that we had.
I don't know, I'm just asking, who's in charge of making the decisions? But the warranty is better than nothing. You got the taillight warranty with the twenty-five hundred, which is shame on us, it's my fault, because nobody watched it. Nobody asked me to watch it, where you could've spent another twenty-five and had a five-year, hundred-thousand-mile warranty.
So we spent twenty-five hundred on a Ray, and we put another five thousand into it, then we got.
Well, we can't lose the twenty-five, that's over with now.
Well, it's just.
That's over.
I would not be in favor of putting five thousand dollars in that car.
It's still a, it's still a.
We've had discussions on police cars in the past, what.
And I know we go on about ours, but the Sheriff's Department's got idle on ours. My tow truck's got idle, they all got idle on ours.
That's not apples to apples, though, the Sheriff's Department has V eights, there's our V sixes, the V sixes are gone.
Well, but they elected to buy them in the beginning, but they're still, they're running.
They was in an effort to save fuel, but they, I mean.
That's not a very good trade-off.
No, it's not, but at the time, the unknown problems with the V six Dodge engine, I mean, their sludge, I mean, they just.
But it would have a five-year, hundred-thousand-mile warranty. I'm pretty sure none of the table are engine experts. Certainly, John and Randy have experience, business experience there, but. I'm an ASE certified tech, but go ahead. Pardon me? I said I'm an ASE certified tech, but go ahead. Okay. What do we need to do to move forward on making this decision, and how should we handle it moving forward? Well, the only thing I'm worried about is, and I'm just throwing this out here, we just hired another guy. What if, in the fifteen budget, it's either the cars? I'm just saying, for instance, the cars, or we might have to get rid of a cop.
No, it'd be sixteen.
I'm just saying, though.
That'd be sixteen budget, not fifteen.
Well, sixteen budget, okay. But I'm just saying, we're putting our car way above our horse in front of it, because we don't have a budget yet.
Chief, would you say you're gonna come in way under the budget?
I believe I will come at least this far under budget.
What do you mean by this far?
The payment amount for this, the twenty thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Sufficiently under budget to buy a car this year?
To buy one car with equipment, possibly.
Let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
This, typically, like in years past, do you have a regular schedule that you fix these out? And normally, what kind of mileage are you getting out of it when you're retiring them?
That's a good question. Until thirteen, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and ten-ish to two thousand and thirteen, we were replacing two a year. So this would've been scheduled to go out, the two Impalas would've been scheduled to go out in thirteen budget. The two thousand and seven Charger would've been scheduled to go out in last year's budget, in the fourteen budget. No, I take it back, fourteen and fifteen. Would've gone out in the fourteen budget, and the Charger would've gone out in the fifteen budget. We actually ended up buying a vehicle outright, because one of our cars, another engine issue that we had with a Trailblazer. So we bought that outright, so that would've been the second car that would've been scheduled to go out with the Charger.
So if I'm understanding you right, these were kind of on the way out anyway?
Yes, they would've been had we continued that program.
Had you continued that way. And those other vehicles, what kind of mileage did they have on them, do you get rid of them?
The thought was, I will answer your question, but the thought was if we can keep them around the fifty, sixty, seventy-five thousand mile range, we'd get more resale value on them than running them until the wheels fell off. So I believe the Chargers were in the eighty thousand to ninety thousand mile range.
How many miles we put on a year, chief?
It depends, typically, typically it's a hundred, hundred miles a shift, give or take twenty miles. We're definitely running the fifteen thousand a year average, but again, that's fifteen thousand mile city miles.
Well, I can tell you from experience, even in regards to the, and again, this was way before I was around, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but we're talking about the V six Charger thing. Maybe when you look at buying new vehicles, it's my experience, you're always better off getting the biggest engine you can. Not because you want to go fast, but in the long run, it'll last longer because it isn't working as hard.
Right.
So I know there's the fuel economy thing, but in my experience, that's mainly negated by premature repairs, because they're laboring hard.
Unfortunately, yeah, we're limited now, Chevy came out with, and this is a lengthier discussion.
Right, I know.
Chevy came out with a Caprice, but it's got the shifter on the floor or on the home, which is not conducive to law enforcement. Chevy has the Tahoe, which is a V eight, which I don't see the city going for. Ford doesn't offer a V eight anymore, they offered one with the Crown Victoria, but the Taurus has come into the V sixes. So again, that's probably a lengthier discussion.
Would this be better if we have a work session with Alderman that have the experience in automotive industry and you to sit down and talk about these things, and then instead of talking about them now?
Right, and it was slated for the work session today, I just didn't know if there was any questions that I could field now.
How long does it take?
Leave me on that work session, because I have no idea what I'm.
I am not sure, I have to re-. It was slated for, I think, on the second meeting in May, but it was the first meeting, and it's in the second.
We maybe put it off till the next meeting and have a work session, we'll put you at the top of the list on the next work session.
I'll make a motion to table it when it comes up.
And then when we get to that argument, you can table it? When we get to that. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Any reports from the board?
We have a meeting Tuesday at two-thirty, housing. They signed an agreement today with St. Francis.
What city?
They put a number in?
Twenty-eight, two.
For management, or what? What's the name of the manager company? St. Francis.
St. Francis Housing Authority or something.
St. Francis County, I think.
Oh, okay.
They're gonna oversee this one until, for a while anyway, until we can, until I guess Hyde decides that we need to get our own director or get that person in there.
Now, do we, can we push them to do their, they didn't do their lawn yet, did they, Don?
They're doing the thing.
Oh, they didn't, okay. Thank you.
Okay, go to the minutes of April thirteenth?
Me to prove.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? End of closed session for April thirteenth.
That is correctional. But it's okay, it's unapproved, so. Okay.
I didn't catch it, Don, we can go back, we need to.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's the wrong, Alderman name. Move to approve the minutes of the closed session.
Began.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Financial report for March.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, resolution two thousand and fifteen thirty-one, a resolution reappointing Barbara Bosler to the St. Genevieve Park Board.
Motion. Began.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, old business, new business. Bill number forty twenty-eight, first reading.
Motion to table. Second.
All in favor of, does she have to read that for you to table it?
Yeah.
No. All right, all in favor of tabling bill number forty twenty-eight?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, bill number forty twenty-nine, first reading.
In the ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing a two-hour parking restriction on the east side of Fourth Street between Jefferson and Washington Street.
This was to fix the problem we were having with it being posted but not part of our ordinance, right?
Yeah, motion approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do, is there a reason not to have a second reading on this? Because of the.
The signage is up, I think, I think.
As the westbound sides, or they're just gonna park over on the eastbound side.
Move for a second reading.
Second. All in favor of second reading of forty twenty-nine?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, bill number forty twenty-nine.
In ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing a two-hour parking restriction on the east side of Fourth Street between Jefferson and Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toddwell. Yes. Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Joe Hurst.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donis Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rosika.
Yes.
Eight yes and zero no's. Bill number forty twenty-nine now becomes ordinance thirty-nine sixty-five.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, anyone?
Well, I think about half of you know where we're here. Oh, Tim Williams, Connie Williams, ten forty-seven Westwood Drive. Our sewer is backed up on us again. It happened back in oh-two, and we're asking the city to put a pump or something in our yard to keep that from coming back on us again.
So why, Steve, why does this happen? Does it, I mean, help us understand the circumstances and situation?
The line rung on Westwood, it hurt their lateral, their lateral is very flat. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it takes very minimal amount of increased flow to flow back in their line. There is a check valve in the line, but I mean, it wasn't working.
So is this issue a responsibility to the city?
I don't believe so.
I believe so, because it's a city sewer that's backing up into our house, it's the, it happened in oh-two, and supposedly the sewer line got fixed before Westwood Drive that put in the new road, so we didn't push it any further than that. And here it is again, we got, our insurance is maxed out.
I'd be mad in hell.
And then we had, we had a cleaning agency for twelve days.
Steve, is there, what can we do to fix this? How much would it cost?
I have a price, but Martin has a question.
We had a plumber at our house also that verified that it was the city sewer that did back up into our basement that day. Nobody was at home, nobody was using the water.
The estimate for the small grinder pump is four thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars.
Is that, that's installed also?
Installed.
Tell you what, if the city sewer was backing up into my house, I'd be mad in ten innings.
Well, it's the second time.
Yeah, this is the second time. Like I said, oh-two had happened, and supposedly the lines were fixed before they put the new road in on Westwood Drive. So we didn't push, they offered, Alderman and guys offered to put a pump in before that, and I thought the sewer was fixed, so we didn't push it any further, because the new road went in, everything was supposed to be hunky-dory, until fourteen days ago, we got two inches of sewer water in our basement, we had to rip the whole basement out. And it's still in pieces, we can't do nothing until we get something that we know this sewer is not gonna back up into our house again.
And we can't control what comes down the street, we can't control if other people sewer each and other. That's nothing we should have to worry about, that's why we pay our taxes.
It's very disturbing.
Steve, is the lateral line put in the wrong way, in your opinion?
You know, with how to put a transit on it? I can't exactly tell you.
Okay, so we don't know?
No, there is a check valve in the line, in the lateral line, but Mr. Williams has claimed he's never maintained.
I didn't even know it was there, there's a dredge pipe in my front yard with a metal lid on it, and it's been full of water since we moved in there.
Why is he supposed to maintain that?
It's his lateral. Customer maintains and is responsible for their lateral F two and including the connection to the city main.
We didn't put no lateral in, it's probably been there in, hard telling when. We didn't buy the house till nineteen ninety, and I have no idea when that was put in or what it was, because you never knew what was in there.
So Martin, what's your take on the situation?
Well, I think Steve's comments are correct. Well, I think Steve's comments are correct, we, it, it appears to be a flat line that was installed when the house was built.
A flat line, what does that mean?
There's insufficient fall-
Okay, okay.
To, to, to keep it from backing up under normal flow conditions. Um, the, you know, and, and nobody was there when that, when that happened. Technically, there's no, you know, we, our responsibility ends with, with the main, uh, they're asking for consideration beyond what the code would otherwise require us to do. And that's just a judgment call.
So, the line in question is in their property, it's under their yard?
Yes.
Actually, the line in question is why the city sewer keeps coming in ours, I mean, it's, I don't know if we got a flat line or whatever the heck you're talking about there, but-
Steve could, theoretically, their line can't be lowered, though, correct?
No.
It's as low as it can go, we can't put it any lower into our main.
No, no, our main is, at one elevation, has, you know, gotta be a flat line across to the basement.
So, they could not lower their sewer line?
They actually have a razor.
Whereabouts?
Okay.
Have to raise, I mean, you got, you need to raise the house.
You, yeah.
Or lower the main line down the street if we wanted to.
Or you could lower your lateral, uh, point up your basement wall, there where you could fall out to the main.
Yeah, but then you got no floor drag.
Right.
No floor drag, no basement.
I think this may be our problem.
We did have a plumber at the house that day, too, and he said it definitely was not, you know, from our house that caused the problem, so we could have that in writing also, if you want to see it written.
Will that four thousand dollar grinder pump take care of this, Steve?
Yes.
It will take care of it?
They would, with proper maintenance, it would not back up, no basement.
Okay. And who does the maintenance on it?
Us?
Huh?
Home owner.
Yeah, we were told the last time that we would, the city would put it in, but we'd have to maintain it.
What is there to maintain a grinder pump?
Check valves, electric, you have, uh, switch foots.
What do you maintain with the electric?
Yeah, I have an electric going, too, that's-
Well, that's, that's not, that's not-
In terms of maintenance, you gotta periodically make sure that the check valve, that it's clean.
I cleaned it out once.
I don't, I don't know, I don't understand the thing.
I got one, I was just remembering that, too, I think, I just got one. He just sprained it.
Pardon?
It, it's not major maintenance, it's just cleaning it periodically.
I'd be more willing to do that, just to keep the sewer out of our basement, because we don't want to rebuild our basement again and have this happen again, it's just-
He's the only one having problems.
And our insurance is already maxed out, and then some.
He's the only one having problems, but, again, I think it has to do with the pitch of the lateral, and it's just, like Steve says, it doesn't take much water for it to run, try and run back up that pipe.
Well, what do we do here, Gus?
I would say, Rick, I think it's our responsibility.
I, I, you know, I just, I think it's a bad situation.
I do.
Um, I mean, we can't, here, here's, here's the way I see this, on one hand, we, the city can't pay for everybody's problem, when it's really under the current way we view this, on your side of the, of the, the deal, but at the same time, that's why you pay taxes, I mean, I, maybe we just kind of have a bad way of looking at that, I would be in favor of spending this money, getting this taken care of, and stopping the situation, I know how I feel.
You know, back years ago, we didn't have building inspectors, now we have them, this could probably have been taken care of.
Actually, that-
You don't know pitch and-
The, the building inspector stops about three feet outside the foundation.
Okay.
So, but, but you do kind of have a sense of whether the basement is being set at the proper elevation relative to the sewer line.
On, on, it's new construction, and our current ordinance is the contractor has to be licensed to put that in, any, just, any Joe Blow could do that and screw it up.
We, we don't license, we, we don't have any licensing for craftsmen or contractors.
Well, the thing about it is, probably you don't know how deep it is, that's what happened with us.
Yeah. And over that many years, a house, it could've been borderline, the house could've even sunk an inch or two.
Well, we can, we can tell them the elevation of, of the sewer line, where the line's gonna connect, I mean, for new, for future construction that relate to this.
I just think it's a slippery slope, just like taking care of these two abandoned, burned-out buildings at the city's expense, but I felt like we had an obligation to the neighbors and the board, the whole board felt that, I think, I, I don't think we can, I don't know, do you set a precedence where you have to go outside the line for everybody? But, I mean, I think we ought to, I think we ought to fix it, too. Yeah.
So, Miss Paul, you said you're on TV.
Yeah. I agree with you, it does, it does open up the door, then, for a whole lot of other things, that, you know.
I think we ought, I think we ought to fix it.
Well, we put, we put these pumps in for right there.
I think, I think John's got a good point, I think we, we spend that money, we do it, and we're done with it forever.
Right.
Right.
I'd like to be done with it forever.
Yeah, yeah, nobody would go through that, I've been there.
Lots of personal belongings were lost, too.
I hauled three pickup loads of trash to dumpster, papers, X.
Okay, we need to make a motion to go ahead and do this, I make a motion to go ahead and, how we do this?
Okay, then, spend your-
Martin, I, I don't think it takes a motion, it's within the spending limits of the mayor, it doesn't require actual board of Alderman, more of a sense of the board than-
All right, thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, any, anybody else? Mr. Weiner.
Start the clock, let's get five minutes.
After eight o'clock, you get two minutes.
I wasn't gonna talk tonight, but I changed my mind. Mayor, city administrator, members of the board, listening audience, I think I've only got one thing to say, maybe two. Stick this tip over real good. If you make changes, you might be opening up a can of worms, where you're gonna have this problem later on, and it's gonna stick to what you're supposed to stick to.
What, what exactly do you have to mean?
I mean, I wouldn't change it the way it was originally designed. I think there's a lot of other problems with this other than that, and I think it's money. I'm not gonna go on and on to make any statements, but I do think you gotta do, I, you know, I can't tell you what to do, but I can suggest what to do.
I'm having trouble understanding what you're suggesting.
Look this over real good before you make a mistake, because somewhere along the line, they made a mistake before.
I still don't understand.
Not this board, well, it's hard to explain, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into the details, all I say is, I want you to look into this real good before you make a decision. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um, we, and, uh, under other business, we have a request for today, street closure from the St. Genevieve Master Gardeners for May the sixteenth and seventeenth, for the annual St. Genevieve Garden Walk and Plant Sale, request is for one-half block of Market Street between Main and Front.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and a request for a street closure in the St. Genevieve County Community Center for Progress Parkway on May the twenty-third for a mini triathlon.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.